City Council Tuesday, September 24th. We do have a quorum and we have Mother Jamie Koch from the Episcopalian Church to lead us in the invocation and pledge, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, whose blessed Son came not to be served but to serve, bless all who, following in His steps, give themselves to the service of others, that with wisdom, patience, and courage, they may minister in His name to the suffering, the friendless, and the needy. For the love of Him who laid down His life for us, Your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Here. We are on to recognition and awards and the Employee of the Month Award. The Employee of the Month for September 2019 is Johnny Reich. Johnny regularly and consistently supports his coworkers. He looks out for others in safety, gently reminding others about proper procedure for their protection. He also takes the time to help others learn and improve in their job skills. He will patiently and carefully help new employees to ensure that they have the skills to advance in their position and is an excellent teacher. He truly takes time to help others understand their jobs. Johnny's work ethic is excellent. He has initiative, likes to try new things, and has a real eye for detail. He thinks ahead to the next task and is very dependable. He is always willing to help others succeed at their jobs. For these reasons, we concur that Johnny Reich is deserving of Employee of the Month. So Johnny here.
Congratulations, John.
Good job. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our next order of business is the granting of an AARP Community Challenge Honorary Check presentation, and we have Mr. Sean Boskal here, I think, would like to say a few words.
I think the good part is the check is already cleared in August, so I don't think we'll have much luck running that one through the drive-through unless you've got connections. But we wanted to come and present the honorary check and thank McAllister for the interest in AARP's livable community grants. We started these about three years ago, helping communities make their communities more livable and accessible for all citizens, including our older residents as well. And it's probably no coincidence that our state president's from McAllister, so she may have a little bit to do with that. But we wanted to also recognize, we have State Reps Greg O. and Smith and Senator Boggs here with us to be part of this presentation of honorary check. And Joanne, did you want to just say a few words?
They know I'm a retired educator, but you don't give a microphone very often to those people. I just wanted to say how excited I was when I saw that McAllister had applied for this grant, and I've been excited about that RVS project ever since I saw it, because I think of the senior citizens that live in the Aldridge and what an advantage that is going to be for them. So I just think I congratulate you. I don't know if you're aware of AARP Oklahoma as much as I am, but AARP Oklahoma has over 400,000 members. We have a very limited staff, and we're very glad that two of those people could be here tonight. McAllister has one of the, I think there are only about 15 chapters in Oklahoma, and we have one of those chapters here in McAllister. So we're very glad to work with you, and if there's anything our chapter can ever do for you, just let us know. But congratulations, that's great.
Thank you. And this money is going to be matched by the City of McAllister for continued improvements in our best park, so thank you very much, and it's going to be a great addition to the park that's already there. So Stephanie, did you want a picture of everybody?
I'd love to do one more photo if we can have you guys stand amongst the council members.
Do you want us to stand there, or would you just like us to stand up back here?
If you stand up where you are, that would give us the good dual level of attention. Well, if we could have the council members.
Maybe slide down that way. It stands for discounts. He said, what does it stand for? It said discounts?
Okay, we are on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address, and council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. We did have one sign up, Tony Ervin.
Tony Ervin, 600 East South Avenue. I think I live at City Hall, though. I wanted to announce for the fifth year in a row, we've gotten a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. We just got notice of that, and if you remember, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. A lot of Oklahoma cities that get this are the Oklahoma Cities, the Edmonds, the Norman, Stillwater. Not a lot of them are size. And then the CAFER is judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. We prepare approximately 20 extra pages at the end of our financial reporting, in addition to all the other GASP requirements to get this, and they do change the requirements pretty much each and every year to make it and improve it. So I just wanted to tell you, we've got our five, this thing is so heavy, I'm sorry, our fifth little button here for our, it'll be on our trophy case upstairs. Yes, it's a team effort, the whole team.
It's very impressive as well, because the team has had two different leaders during that five-year period, and for the continuity to continue with the practices is a testament to how good the system is set up.
We want to hold high standards and continue to hold high standards.
Thank you. We will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted in one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, the agenda consists of A, approval of minutes from the August 27, 2019 regular meeting of the McAllister City Council; B, approval of the minutes from September 10, 2019 regular meeting of the McAllister City Council; C, approval of claims for September 4, 2019; through September 17, 2019; D, consider an act upon to concur with Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, recommended to deny claim number 206-861-ME; and E, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Infomark LLC for receipt of a check in the amount of $28,421.30 for the 2019-2020 contract as payment for the remaining water treatment plant chemicals as of June 30, 2019. Would anyone like anything removed?
D is a dog.
Anyone else? Take a motion to approve items A, B, C, and E. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Councilwoman Harrison?
My question is pursuant to this. Have there been any successful tort claims, and what makes it a successful tort claim? Because it seems like there's a lot of denial. All due respect to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, but could somebody explain how does someone have a successful tort claim?
Mr. Ervin, I think that would, anybody else talking?
I read the O-MAG report. This was on a sewer backup on South Main, and a business had a sewer backup. They called out the city, the city, they made a claim against the city for the damage done to, because of the backup. The jester for O-MAG determined that it was, the backup was caused by weeds or roots in the system, and their finding was that the city is not liable for such backups unless they've had prior knowledge and have failed to take remedial action, which was not the case here. And so they turned down, our insurance company turned down the claim, and so that's the basis on this. Now, I'm assuming that every claim made, since we have insurance for these type torts, are referred and are examined on case-by-case basis, and whether or not there have ever been any claims approved, I don't know. I understand that we've had different insurance companies. But each claim should be considered. That's the reason we ask you to delay action, because at the end of 90 days after the claim is made, it's a moratorium. They cannot sue the city for that 90 days, and then, or when the claim is denied. And so that's the action that our insurance company has asked us. They found no fault by the city for that backup, and they're asking, are they recommending that the city deny the claim? But I'm assuming that if it's a meritorious claim, they would settle it on behalf of the city within the term limits of the Tort Liability Claims Act.
So how long have we had this insurance company?
I'm not sure how long O-MAG has represented the city.
Probably at least four or five years.
Four or five years. And what would it take to have a successful tort claim? Because I really want to understand that, because I felt like...
They would have to determine that there is liability on behalf of the city for that claim. And I think, you know, now we have limited liability.
All right.
We have liability for things, but it's limited by the law. Before that, you had to determine if it was a government function or a proprietary function, such as a swimming pool or something. Well, that was not deemed to be a good system, so they allowed the cities to insure, but they limited the liability, and that's by the state. We are a subdivision of the state, and so they have adopted limited liability for the state and its members.
Is there a set amount? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, there are policy limits. Property damage such as this, no other liability, but if they had determined liability for this, it was $25,000 would be the maximum for property damage for a single event. I think it goes up to a million per occurrence for bodily injury or death.
The reason I'm asking is, you know, these tort claims have come up several times, and I didn't, I know we've talked about it, but I want it, not only for myself, but for the viewing audience, to understand what is really what's going on.
We pay them a premium every month to provide that coverage. And I'm assuming that we, they did assign an insurance investigator who came down and viewed the project to determine if it was something that the city would have liability for, and they found that there was no liability. Now, I'm told by the city clerk that she does notify the owner, I think that was your question last time, but she does notify the property owner or whoever's involved in the claim of the action of the council.
All right, well, I just wanted clarification, and thank you so much. Appreciate that.
I think kind of a general rule is if the city is not aware of the problem, you're not liable. It's once you become aware of the problem to fail to act.
Within 72 hours.
I don't know.
There's no time limit on that.
The city is required to take remedial action once it's advised or informed of the problem.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes, our example, counselor. Somebody go out here and hit a big manhole and tear your car up. City is not aware of it.
Well, there are a number of exemptions from liability, and it may be that conditions such as that or removal of a sign that has been a common occurrence, that there is no liability for that unless the city has been informed and fails to take remedial action.
Let's say it happens at midnight. Tear your car up, and you can't notify until the next morning.
It's not the claimant that notifies, it's, I think it's, somebody has notified the city of this defect, and the city has neglected to take some action, and that's where the liability lies.
So you have to get a city, and I've seen this, so you have to get a city proper notice and time to go out and repair that issue before...
Mainly for things like street signs and street conditions and, you know, things like that that are going to occur, you know, that if the city isn't given an opportunity to correct it, then they wouldn't be liable.
And additionally, with us denying the claim, they can still...
Now, they can still sue. Now, they're free to sue if they wish to do that.
Councilwoman Harrison, something to keep in mind here is you're seeing only the denials. You're not seeing the claims that are actually paid.
That's what I'm asking for.
Or processed. And it's all, each one is independently adjusted as to how it falls within our parameters.
Have you paid any this year?
I couldn't answer that. One other thing, this gives me a perfect opportunity to advise the general public about backflow preventers, especially when it comes to sewer problems. You can put a backflow preventer on your house, a plumber will install that on your line, and if there's a backup, that preventer will actually close and won't allow sewer to back up into your house. It's about an $880 preventer. We encourage everybody to get one, because it saves a lot of problems, a lot of headaches.
What is it called again, please?
Backflow Preventers. And all the plumbers in town know about them, know how to install them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Take a motion, and second, item D, motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
No.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to a public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. Tonight's public hearing is an ordinance adopting the Moving McAllister Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of McAllister dated September 2019, and amending Section 62-7 Comprehensive Plan, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. I would take a motion, second to open, motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we are now in the public hearing. Anyone wanting to address this, please step forward. Saying no, and I take a motion, and second to close, motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number one, presentation of the McAllister Regional Health Center Quarterly Update. Do you know the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
So Mayor, City Council, administrative staff, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving McAllister Regional the opportunity to address you. In full disclosure, I must admit that I'm a little bit nervous tonight. Not because I had my full administrative staff with me, but I have my best and worst critic with me, my wife, Terry Keith. So I will try to do this flawlessly. But anyway, I do have my administrative staff. I don't know if you have the opportunity to meet all of them at once like this, but I have Jim Frazier, my chief financial officer, I have Darrell Lannington, my chief business development officer, we got Dr. Kathy, our vice president of medical affairs, Jim Stout, chief operating officer, chief nursing officer, Jeff Warmouth, my property real estate manager, Sean Howard, my vice president of support services, and Chris Plunkett, administrator over our clinics. And so they're here to help me tonight. So want to make this a little bit interactive with my team tonight, so some of them will be answering questions and maybe speaking to this group. We'll talk a little bit of our financials today. We have not completed the audit. I don't think that's completed till October, but we'll give you an idea of what our financials look like toward the end of the year. We'll talk a little bit about quality, customer services. We'll talk a little bit about what's new at McAllister, employee recognition awards, community involvement, and again, last time we met, I told you that I would bring back to you some of the ideas we're thinking about with our investments in downtown McAllister and so forth. So at this time, I'd like to bring up my chief financial officer to address the financials for you.
Hi, good evening. So I'm just, I have a couple of notes here. So anyway, this is a quarterly update. So the first item up there is our total net operating revenues for the quarter, and you see it's about 24.7 million, and for the most part, on a quarterly basis, it averages right in that area, especially over the last three quarters. It's averaged about 23.7 to 24.7, right in that area. It represents our net patient revenue, which is the revenue after contractual allowances, bad debt, charity allowances, all of that. It also includes our other revenues, like our shop revenues that we get from the state of Oklahoma, as well as things like cafeteria revenue, those types of things like that. Total operating expenses that go along with that, about 22.7, and our earnings before depreciation and amortization is 1.8 million for the quarter. Our cash position at June 30 was 33.3 million. Previous year, it was about 39 million, so we're down about $6 million. A good part of that was the cash investment that we made in our new ER project. Net accounts receivable is 16.2 million. It represents about 49 days. So what that means is it takes about 49 days from the time of bill to the time that we collect a patient's account. Capital assets at 43.1 million. Over this past year, we invested about 1.75 million in new equipment for the hospital. And then additionally, for fiscal year 20 coming up, we have about the same, about 1.65 million, and then we have another $4 million in other projects that we're working on. Current liabilities at 10.2 million basically represents accounts payable and our payroll accrual. For the most part, what that is, is current liabilities is just, we run about, anywhere from about 30 to 45 days. By the time we get an invoice, do we turn around and pay it? That's about, it's about an industry standard. Sometimes it goes up a little bit. It depends on the last day of the month when it cuts off, whether it's on a Friday or on a Wednesday, because we pay, we do check runs on a Friday. A long-term debt of 11.2 million, most of that is the representative of the note that we owe on our new ER. I think you've all probably had a chance to see our new, beautiful new emergency room. About eight and a half million is about for that, and then we have about, just about $3 million in a new Meditech computer upgrade, which includes our electronic medical record, brand-new general ledger accounting systems, clinical applications, and all of that. So that's it from a quarterly basis, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to Dana. Sure.
You said the cash was 33.3. When was it? When did you say it was 39 million dollars?
It was 39 million dollars, same quarter last year.
So, well, I'm looking at, you presented a presentation here, June, I think it's June, you did it back in December, but it was June 30 of 18 numbers, and this one says 22 million dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just, I can tell you, according to our records, it was 39.
Also in that report...
Okay, so when I say 39 million, I'm talking about not only unrestricted funds, but I'm talking about our investment funds as well.
Well, this report just says cash.
Okay.
Which, I mean, would be a good sign, you're growing cash. But also, on the same report, June 30, 2018, the yearly revenues were about 85 million dollars. What are they for this fiscal year?
At this point, again, we don't have our audit done, and so generally, it ranges somewhere around 90 million dollars. But this is just for a quarter.
Right. I was just curious if all the quarters are, if you're going to do, you know, that number, if that 24 million dollars is going to project over four quarters.
Okay. So the cash that you're relating to, I'm pretty sure is, the amount is the unrestricted cash that we have. We also have restricted cash that, and what I mean by restricted cash is that cash that can only be spent with board approval. And so that's an investment. We have investments that probably make up the difference of that, and that's invested by Morgan Stanley.
So what is that cash number that you reported up there as a 33.3?
That would be the total.
Okay. And one more question. So I know you don't have the audit done yet, but is that, that 1.8 million dollars is the quarterly earnings, correct?
That would be just for the quarter, correct.
Are the, are the three quarters similar to that?
Approximately, I, I, you know, again, I, I, I was just asked to present quarterly data.
Okay, thank you.
You went. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Jim. So I'll ask it a different, uh, so you anticipate an EBITDA at the end of the year, somewhere around?
It's gonna be somewhere around five to six percent.
Five percent, six percent, okay, very good. So quality is very important to the organization, again, as I addressed at the last meeting, the, the board has said quality, customer service are paramount. And basically, again, this is just a small representation of some of the quality metrics that we follow. And basically, green means that we're beating the national average, red means we might have missed it. So for example, door to TPA, which that cost busting drug, that sixty-four minutes, that skew represented one patient. So, uh, again, we ma- manage and we monitor all of our quality, uh, metrics. Kim or Dr. Kathy, would you like to speak toward our quality program a little bit?
Yeah.
Would you come up and talk just a few minutes about?
I got put on the spot. So we measure a lot of, um, outcomes in the hospital, many of them are mandated by CMS that, and by, uh, a national, and I don't, I can't remember, what does NHSN stand for, do you remember? It's a, it's an infection control data bank that we're required to report into, and it feeds on to CMS. So this is just a portion of some of our quality metrics that we really focus on, and as a whole, we get a report card out annually, and on that report card, it will show the areas that we excel in, and it will show the areas that we need to work to improve upon. And one of the things that we can say as an organization that we really, really do an exceptional job on, and then that's on our hospital-acquired conditions and our infection prevention programs. These metrics right here are throughput for patients discharged from the ED. So you hear a lot of people talking about, um, their weights very, i- it seems like it's a long time in our emergency department, and they can go somewhere else and they get through faster, but yet whenever we benchmark our data to the national average, we really do a good job at moving our patients. We may have an outlier here and an outlier there, and I, I realize that that's a little bit frustrating, but we, we do a very good job, a hundred and forty-five minutes, we are underneath that national average goal. The same way we look at throughput for patients admitted to the hospital from the ED, so we're looking at from the time they come into the ED, and they have to be admitted to the hospital, how long does it take us to get them into the hospital? And we have historically excelled in this area, this, though, we're, we're green for several years, if we look, if we went back and we looked at that, we move them really quick, um, from the outside into the ED, into the inpatient area. Severe sepsis, septic, septic shock care standards, that's, uh, an area that we continue to, uh, work on at all times, we're in the green, we still want to continue to improve that, we wanna, we wanna be exceptional in it. But we have built-in protocols that our doctors, uh, abide by, that our nurses, uh, it helps keep us strict and, and performing to the, uh, standards of practice across the US. Door to TPA, um, we did fall back a few minutes on one patient, um, and if I, and if I'm remembering this correctly, uh, the patient was in CT, getting a CT scan, um, to make sure that, that we were diagnosing this patient accurately. We did, I, I think it was presented before, I'm not real sure, and I don't want to jump ahead, but we have been recognized for our stroke program of excellence. Hospital-acquired CDF, less than one is the goal. We have been performing way better than that goal for many years, and the past couple of quarters, we have seen a little rise in hospital-acquired CDF, if you remember, this is an infection that is highly contagious. It is, uh, uh, an infection that, uh, if the patient, if, if we don't collect the specimen within three days of admission, then it's considered hospital-acquired, so we have to report it out. Even if they may have had the infection prior to that, we didn't get the collection process, the, the specimen process, so it hits us. So we're working on that, we're working to make sure that the nursing staff and our physicians recognize that if a patient is having problems, that we collect that specimen in a more timely manner, and we'll get that, uh, knocked back down. And then readmission right back to the hospital. Our hospital goal is eight percent, and we have achieved that the last two quarters, and we continue to work on that. Readmission right back to the hospital means any patient that's readmitted within thirty days after their discharge, it doesn't even have to be for the same diagnosis, so let's say a patient came in, uh, for, uh, COPD exacerbation, and they go home and, let's say seventeen days later, they fall and fracture a hip, that's a readmission to the hospital. Those are mandatory reported measures to CMS, so it dings us, but we're doing great, so I'm pretty proud of it.
Thank you. I may have, yeah, sure.
So basically, when you go to the ER, am I looking at this correct, within seventy-four minutes, they're seen by a doctor?
No, they're actually, they're actually, there are more metrics to that, they're actually triaged within minutes, they're seen by a physician within what?
Our average right now about being seen by the physician is running higher than we want, but we're running somewhere around thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
From the time of registration to seeing the doctor.
And this is for the time that the doctor sees him and says, you need to go into the hospital, they're in our hospital within seventy-four minutes.
Okay.
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 So quality's important, sure.
Oh, I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you handle mental, uh, mental illness, if somebody comes in an emergency situation pursuant to that? And also, is there an in-house lab?
Okay, there is in-house lab, we, in fact, we have probably one of the most sophisticated labs in all of southeastern Oklahoma. Dr. Kathy can speak to that, and with regard to the mental health, Kim, can you speak to that, please? Dr. Kathy, first, lab?
As far as the lab, uh, you have one of the best labs. I'd say anywhere in rural Oklahoma, uh, I'd say that we also are some of the top in the state as far as our molecular technology and some of the testing. We have new sepsis programs that are coming online that, uh, in- include tests that are just being approved by the FDA within the last sixty days. So as far as lab, definitely one of the best around, mental health. So, uh, I work closely with the, uh, medical director, Dr. Bowden, over at Carl Albert. Mental health, behavioral health issues are a big, big issue all across Oklahoma, and especially southeastern Oklahoma. There's a great shortage of resources, and, uh, many people who need the help don't have health insurance. And so there's a very limited number of beds in southeastern Oklahoma, there are only fifteen at Carl Albert, and they are often taken by patients from Oklahoma City and Tulsa. So it means the hospital very often holds on to patients who may be suicidal, and the hospital cannot help them as far as the suicidal ideation, they really need that bed at Carl Albert. But we held on to them for days until a bed can be opened up there, and sometimes people that live in McAllister have to be transported to far northwest Oklahoma before a bed becomes available. So we are keenly aware of the behavioral health issues, but it's gonna stake, take effort at a state level to fix this.
Thanks, Nick. Kim, would you speak toward the mental health consortium?
So one of the things that we are doing at McAllister Regional Health Center is we have developed, or we have put together a mental health consortium for southeastern Oklahoma. It, we haven't got it off the ground as quick as what we have wanted to, but we have actually had two large meetings. In fact, one took place today, and, uh, we offer CME credits, uh, to people that desire to get those credits. And the mental health consortium is really, we are sending out notices to all of the, uh, stakeholders within the mental health community, um, in southeastern Oklahoma. We're also going to be, uh, working, uh, more tightly with, uh, southeastern alliance network here in southeastern Oklahoma as well, we discussed that today. But our goal in this consortium, of course, is to increase awareness to, as far as what our resources are, and what resources are lacking, and what can we do as a unified group to try to, uh, bring more resources into southeastern Oklahoma, because it really is a challenge. It's a challenge for us at the hospital and for, uh, like your federally qualified health centers and your, uh, critical access hospitals. They're all part of this consortium.
Is there a reason that you haven't been able to get this off the ground, is it funding, or is it, uh, uh, you know, people, professional people in that field, or what?
Um, no, uh, we have had a change in our program leadership that was, uh, helping us get this up and going at our organization. And, um, whenever this individual moved out of our community, we have just got that replacement position in, and she has already, um, that's how we got our first meeting today, back up and going. So I think we'll see, uh, quicker movement going forward.
All right, thank you.
Let me answer your question a little differently, because I interpreted it a little bit differently. Uh, and now I'm gonna speak to you as a board member of the Oklahoma Hospital Association. We are in desperate need of funding, the funding to mental health was cut severely years ago, it never reinstated. And, and, and I appreciate that a representative is here tonight, because he needs to know this. Mental health in this, this state is underfunded, and we are being underserved by our legislators in, with regard to mental health care. There's a shortage of beds, there's a shortage of, of healthcare professionals to solve the problem, and we're not gonna improve that till we see state funding improve for mental health. Thank you for that question. So customer service, again, our board's mandated improved, uh, customer service. You can see some of the numbers starting to turn green, we are very close to hitting national average. Now that is not ultimately our final goal, is to be better than the national average, but we are getting close. In some areas, we see constant improvement, in others, we see standard deviation, that, or normal deviation. But in some areas, we've seen actual improvement, and so we monitor probably three times the number of, uh, uh, H cap dimensions up here that you see. These are the ones that are important to us right now, and that we've been managing for the last, uh, year and a half. So, new at MRIC, well, we know the VA is here. We've got their signage up, we got their parking set. Darrell, you want to speak to a little bit about the VA and what's happening in the VA, and where we're at with recruitment and staffing and so forth? And volumes, perhaps?
Thank you, uh, we've been very fortunate to have the opportunity, um, I think it was almost a couple of years ago now, to bid, uh, for the, what they call a CBOC, or the Community-Based Outpatient Clinic. Of course, we were successful in winning the award. As a result of that, significant money, I want to say roughly one point two million dollars from the federal government, flowed to us to help us renovate this building that you're looking at in the picture on the screen, and to ready it, uh, for the clinics of the VA. On the, uh, second story, they take up the entire, uh, floor, and that, uh, clinic is focused on primary care needs. And on the third floor, uh, they take up basically just the front corner, um, the front, um, let's see, would that be, I guess, the front east corner, but basically where their sign is, um, and that is for behavioral health. Uh, and they have, um, in addition to face-to-face, uh, clinics, they also do some, uh, telehealth out of this, uh, clinic. They're up to, um, about fifty-five, as it shows there, fifty-five to sixty-five, uh, patients every day, uh, that they are serving there. Also, as it indicates, they employ roughly twenty individuals, so we've got some economic development going on there, people working there, many of them in the city, and there's a few that travel from, from within the region. I will tell you, uh, from a complementarity standpoint, this has been very, uh, beneficial for the hospital as well, because as you may know, the VA federally has been trying to increase access, uh, to various services, healthcare services, for, um, its, uh, veterans. And, uh, as a result of that, we've had more veterans, um, able to use our facility, McAllister Regional Health Center, and they in fact have. We've seen a significant increase, uh, in traffic and volume, both for ancillary testing as well as other services at the facility itself. So it's been, been a really nice relationship, um, we're helping them, they're helping us, very symbiotic, and of course, we're, we're happy to help our veterans.
Thanks, Mark.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, do you use the same medical staff at the hospital over at the veterans' place, or is it separate?
It's a medical. Separate medical staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I anticipate in the next five years, they will come back to us to expand their footprint here, will be very beneficial for the community. So sports medicine, so, uh, Sean, would you speak to the sports medicine program, please? That gentleman, by the way, is Mike Baker, many of you might know Mike Baker, he's been a pillar of this community in a lot of ways, servicing a lot of schools, Sean.
So you just want me to follow through the entire thing here, because I'm, uh, so, um, we've been, um, we've been tinkering with in and out with sports medicine and athletic medicine for a few years now, we've had a very successful outpatient therapy clinic, but we had never had it on the school level where we were actually out with the team. We recently recruited and, um, had the pleasure of gaining Mike Baker, who's been an athletic trainer within schools for years. I'm not sure there's a person that has a child that's played a sport here that hasn't met Mike Baker at some point, and he's been a gem to, to helping us take off the program. In addition to doing sports medicine, um, with, uh, the, the conjoining of, um, orthopedics, we've, we've kind of done a continuum of care for the athlete from school to therapy through the orthopedics, and then back into sports and school. We are also, um, we've also got into, um, occupational, uh, therapy, uh, programs within the schools. We currently do it at six schools, and we have an after-school program for physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy.
Just one quick question, what, what would occupational therapy in schools consist of?
We have a lot of autism programs, um, we have, uh, anything, anything that, to make it, how do I put it in layman's terms? I'm a therapist myself, but not occupational, um, anything that you would do? Anything, feeding yourself, uh, writing, um, putting your clothes on, anything to help your, your daily activities?
I think this represents the strong relationship between the hospital and the school system, and I think that relationship's gonna continue to grow. So, wanted to talk to you a little bit about, uh, again, we purchased the ambulatory surgery center back from St. Francis, it's now one hundred percent wholly owned. And we did that because it was very difficult to have two large entities trying to manage the program. So we came to the resolution that, uh, this really was a McAllister program, we need to own it, and so we were able to purchase our portion back. The gentleman on, on the right, this part of our hospitalist group, and this is Dr. Postaway, which came to us from St. John's. That's Dr. All, David All, he's a local who came back, who's a, who's, uh, a hospitalist, who's, uh, I think he's board certified in internal medicine and pediatrics, and that's Dr. Roloff. Dr. Roloff is one of our recent residents. He and his wife, his wife is a physician, they've stayed in McAllister. And not pictured there is Dr. To- Tavacoli, who is also a graduate of our residency program, who is one of our hospitalists. So we are starting to retain our residents, and we'll talk about their, here in a minute. The same group that really owns Prime also owns Premier, and it's a partnership that we have. And basically, between that partnership, the handoffs between the ED and the hospitalists will be seamless, especially when we get our new medical record in, that, 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 that. will be seamless, especially when we get our new medical record in that, 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 that one, one system of record care, so to speak. And so that strengthens and improves that customer service to, to our patients when the handoff from the E D to the hospitals into home happens that way. But to show you that we are growing and we are starting to see the benefit of our residency program. Just a reminder, we have one of the top cosmetic surgeons in the state, living and working in McAllister. And I don't think people realize that, but he offers a fantastic service. And it's the bridge to where we talk about, when I get to the discussion about the million building, where we talk about medical arts, we talk about spa. Dr. Tedesco is helping us with that. But I put that up here because many people don't realize that they have one of the best cosmetic surgeons in the state, right here, living in McAllister. Dr. Kathy, this is your slide.
So it's a great privilege in McAllister, Oklahoma, we have association with O S U residency program. We have four residents come in at each year. We have 11 currently in the program. At the top, you see some of our faculty members. We have multiple physicians who are also part-time faculty members. We thank the state legislature who in their wisdom actually delegated more money to help the family practice residency programs around the state by several tens of thousands of dollars this year. So that actually helps pay for the salaries for those residents that you see in that picture. The residents very much love being in this community. Most of the people that you see there are dedicated not only to McAllister but southeast Oklahoma. And going forward in the future, we are going to have plethora of primary care physicians who love to be part of southeast Oklahoma.
Thanks, Tim. Wanted to also mention the Belfair project. As you know, the, it's a 70-unit assisted living and memory care unit. McAllister stepped in and, and I, I think I could easily say we were part, a major force in making sure that that project did not fail here in McAllister. We stepped in, we're now 25% owners of that. And we provide a lot of leadership and guidance and governance to the Belfair project. And it's complementary to the Van Buren House. It adds memory care unit, which is something we've not had here and we desperately need it. We've also added a very, very high-tech infant security system. As you know, one of our OB guidance, Dr. Trabotti, is very, very busy. I believe we probably delivered over 500 babies last year, is that correct? And I think it's prudent that we have a very good security system because we, across the nation, you hear about the horror stories about people stealing babies out of the hospitals. Wanted to introduce Dr. Vanessa Minho. She lives here in McAllister. She brought her family here. She's new here, she's been here probably, what, Chris, two months, three months? About a month and a half. And I wanted to put a face with a name and she's a family medicine doctor and she's available. And she's fantastic. I think you'll really enjoy meeting her and I hope you will get to meet with her in the very near future. Tell you what. I'm going the wrong direction, am I? I'm going to get critiqued on that. Okay, hang on. Before I leave that slide, I also want to mention, because I don't have pictures yet and you'll see that at the next meeting. We have successfully recruited a pediatrician, Dr. X Dean. Did I say that right? X, X dot? And we have signed agreements for Dr. Mister and Dr. Mrs. Wick. She is a family medicine doctor who will be joining us within the next few months. And he's a pediatrist who will be joining us next few months. We've also got a letter of intent out to our, a new OB guide, a fellow who will be graduating, I believe, in June. Is that right, Chris? And he'll be joining us and he's affiliated with, his wife is from McAllister. And so he'll be joining us. And we have a letter of intent out to a new sports medicine orthopedic fellow who will be graduating next year that we want to bring on. So our recruitment has stepped up and I guess it's, it's part of our strategic impetus to become that medical destination. And not only are we attracting clients to McAllister, we're attracting providers to McAllister now. And I think that's very strong. So one of my favorite parts to discuss is our employees. And I'm going to ask Kim to come up and introduce these two ladies. But I want to put it, I want her to put it in perspective with regard to these two nurses.
So the pictures you see on the left is Teri Murdaugh. She's one of our R Ns at the hospital. She has been with us for almost 10 years. And Teri is a trauma coordinator, a nurse educator, and she'll work anywhere in the hospital that we need her to go to and does a fantastic job. She primarily helps us out working in the E R though. So if anybody's been in the E R, you may have seen her face. The R N on the right is Kelly Crabtree. And she as well has been an R N at our hospital for over 10 years. And her mother actually retired from our hospital. She is an E R nurse as well. Both of these nurses received recognition as top 100 nurses in Oklahoma. And they actually, last night was the awards banquet. And there are, I, I looked it up at the Oklahoma Board of Nursing and in 2018, the year finished out with 56,000 registered nurses in that range, in R Ns in Oklahoma. Now, only about 34, 33,000 are actually employed R Ns. But still, it puts into perspective that two R Ns out of that many came out of McAllister Regional Health Center. So I'm very proud of them. They do an excellent job. We do have some excellent R Ns in our hospital.
Thank you very much. I also want to mention Lucy Mueller, who handles our health benefits. Has, you know, we're a self-funded plan. And because of her work, our health and wellness programs for employees and the result of low, better healthcare delivery and lower costs, tremendous value to our, our work group. She's been recognized by, by not only Pittsburgh County businesses, but Oklahoma Hospital Association has reached out to her as a local expert on self-funded programs and lowering healthcare costs for businesses. Also want to mention, it's not on the slide, but Chris Plonket here is the recipient of the Salute Award and recognized, and he volunteers for this. He's the Air Force Recruiter of the Year for the entire Air Force. So I want to congratulate him because that shows not only are they, they bring good value to McAllister, regional, but they bring value to the community and it goes way beyond just our community as well. Again, I think this represents the fact that the culture in McAllister Regional has turned the corner. We are starting to be recognized. We have other recognitions coming. We are embargoed, we cannot tell you what they are. But when they come, you'll understand that we feel like our culture has changed to where we really believe in quality, customer service and excellence. And it shows through our recruitment, our retention and our employees. I would like to know, you to notice Becker's review. We're a top 150 great places to work in healthcare that's nationwide. And you will see other awards coming that are very similar in the very near future. So again, we're in the community. This is Dr. Reynolds, one of our cardiologists. No, yep. Dr. Moore, Dr. Reynolds is joining him, it's his partner. So we're getting out there, meeting the community. I did not know this, but we, we sponsor, we have created the largest community health care in the state. And Chris, can you explain that to these folks, what that really means?
Actually happy to get up here today and talk to you about it. About four or five years ago, it was kind of a, a dream, if you will, of how could we help those that are underinsured in our community or less fortunate or maybe they just have higher deductibles. There happens to be a lot of those folks in our community. And Ashley Kinnon and myself were actually out marketing one day and we stumbled across a Integris hospital kind of mobile fair. And so we actually went through the process to adventure and kind of see what they did and talked to them a little bit about how they give back. And once again, four or five years ago, we said, hey, we can do this in our community. We can give back to our community. And so we put on our first health fair and in a four-hour health fair, we had about 125 people and we were hoping for 100. So we said, wow, this is really amazing. And I think we had about 10 or 12 healthcare stations. Fast forward to four years later, this will be our fifth health fair this year. We've, we're going to have over 30 different health fair booths that are going to be available. And we expect somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 to 1,500 people that are going to come out for this event. Last year, we had over 1,000 people and we were recognized by the journal record as the number one health fair in the state of Oklahoma and received a beacon award for the, for the efforts of this health fair. Once again, it's not just a marketing team, it's a community approach and it's a team approach from the wonderful professionals at McAllister Regional Health Center.
Thank you. So looking ahead, we're going to talk a little bit, again, I want to talk to you about Three North. Again, we are 1978 vintage hospital. We upgraded to West two years ago. We want to do the same for Three North. It's one of our busiest units, we want to make it a modern unit. We are continuing our negotiation with the malls of McAllister on that additional urgent care location. Again, our, our strategic plan is to provide better access on the south side of this community and county. And we will have an additional urgent care location created regardless. Again, Daryl mentioned our fully integrated enhanced electronic health record. And we are looking at external wayfinding for the campus. We continue to add programs and new doctors and it's becoming more and more of a challenge for people to meander through our campus and find the services they need. So we'll be putting some money and capital into signage, both brick and mortar and maybe even electronic. So at this time, I'm going to invite Jeff Warmuth and Sean to come out and talk about our two big projects downtown. They'll both talk a little bit about the goals and objectives. One's going to talk about the construction and the timelines. The other one's going to talk about the purpose. And I'll let them decide which one they want to talk about.
Good afternoon. This is an exciting project for us. We were very excited to be downtown in the heart of McAllister and in this building with historic value is just a gem for us to repurpose and to renovate and to bring back to what it looked like 100 years ago. We are looking at bringing Dr. Tedesco and his medical spa into this facility and also some medical retail as well. And just what all that means today is complementary businesses that will assist the medical spa. So it could be anything ranging from actually salon services to durable medical equipment, perhaps inside there or some other ancillary businesses that will all be complementary in the medical area. The salon thought process is bringing in people that are coming in for some cosmetic surgery and they can also get themselves dolled up for an evening. And so there's a way to bring in some collectiveness and bring in a tourism meaning into, into this facility to downtown, some attraction into this facility. And so we're looking at some ways to purpose this and to bring in tourism, but also to use this as a, as a medical spa for people in the community and outline. We're very excited to bring on architect Chris Lilly as the architect for this. He's, he has been known, and I'll have Sean talk more about this. He's been known in the region for repurposing and bringing back renovations of, of buildings that are of historical value and he does an excellent job. So I'd like for Sean to talk about that a little bit more. Part of this space will be the medical spa component. The other part that we're looking at will be more of a community event center type of outing. And so this, this very large footprint of a building, we're able to divide it up in ways that we can have the community accessing part of this and then using it as the medical spa itself. Sean, would you like to add a little bit about Chris Lilly?
So like Jeff said, finding the architect for this project was a little different than things we've worked on in the past. We didn't really focus on somebody that was really just focused on medicine and the delivery of medicine. We really wanted to focus on somebody that could, that could honor the integrity and the vision that they had when they built the business, even though we're not using it for the same intent. We wanted to keep the appearance of the business and the historic value of it to the community intact. The economic development of this outside of our medical arts and spa building is really important to us because when you think of the health of the community, you not only think of when you're sick, we focus on preventative medicine. And this is something that we think we can draw economic development, whether it be through nutrition, dietary education. We think we have a lot of opportunities with the space that we have here. Our next project that we have going, although it's, it's kind of, it's, it's back to primary care and it's back to physicians, it's the same objective when it talks to economic development for that downtown area. If I was editing this PowerPoint myself, I probably would have skipped this slide back because David ending that previous slide with wayfinding is the perfect segue for this. One of the things that is really, really important to us is getting primary care in the community. Having easy and convenient access for people to go in and just see their primary care doctor. Having one-stop shop, so to speak, to where when you're seeing your doctor, you can get your labs, you can get any imaging, all in one building. So, you know, we, we not only think of the people that drive theirself to the doctor, but we also think of people that have to get a ride to the doctor. How difficult is that, you know, for somebody to take them all over town just to meet the needs they have and to have to walk around our big hospital and find your way around? So we're trying to get that out into the community. And we're using a resource that we purchased a while back with some help from the Pewterbaugh Foundation to remodel that second floor to house all of our primary care, our Mercy Clinic, and it'll also house our Oklahoma State University Family Medicine Residency. The first floor, we're going to, although they weren't running concurrent, we're going to kind of phase them. Phase one, we'll get primary care into the building. Phase two concurrently will become the new home for outpatient imaging and our women's, women's services imaging center. Again, trying to get those primary care needs into the community.
Thank you. So these two objectives will probably drive over 150 people to downtown every day, not including employees. That's our objective. We know, like McAllister Regional is a destination for healthcare. We want to be a part of making the great city of McAllister a destination throughout southeast and Oklahoma. And I think we can be a part of that. And so that's our, that's our goal. I also want to mention that First National Bank played a huge role in this building because they sold this building to us and they sold it at less than cost. And so once again, the, the First National Bank, the Bass family contributed to our hospital in, in ways that they never envisioned that they could. Now, Cancer Center project. And this, I will invite Jeff Warmuth up. Jeff is wearing two hats. He's managing our philanthropic efforts toward the Cancer Center. And again, he's doing our real estate property management. And so I think I would like him to speak to this and I'll be able to answer more of the detailed questions with regard to the Cancer Center. Jeff?
Thank you. Our current cancer center located in a separate building on our campus can handle about 325 patients a week. And the demand far exceeds that. They have nine oncology areas, they've got four clinic rooms. And you can come in there any day of the week, anytime during the day, and you'll find it almost wall to wall with people standing, waiting to get their treatment. And this is, you know, cancer touches everybody. And, and when you come into that facility where it is today, your heart breaks because there's just, there's just no room, they're at capacity. The city thankfully, a year ago, year and a half ago, passed a sales tax that will help fund a new cancer center. And so we have engaged that and we're excited to. And so we have engaged that and we're excited to move forward with raising the funds and putting the plan in place, raise the funds for the new Cancer Center. But that also leads the way to a new surgical center and a new ICU and we'll talk about that shortly. The Cancer Center project, when we started to take a hard look at it, at the amount of money that would take to get it off the ground is about $15 million. About half of that will be coming from the sales tax through the city of McAllister. The other half will be through matching, through some of the hospital and the foundation and then through philanthropic efforts. So to engage this, one of the largest philanthropic efforts ever undertaken by the hospital, we contract with Vision Philanthropy Group. It's one of the premier philanthropic consulting companies in the country to come to McAllister and to do a feasibility study to see if we can shoulder the weight for the financial responsibilities for the new Cancer Center and the surgical and ICU floors. And they will be completing their study here shortly and we'll be presenting it to the Board of Trustees in November, at the November 6 meeting. Their feasibility study included interviewing about 50 people in the community and those interviews were ranging, the questions were ranging about the leadership of the hospital, the community's understanding of what the hospital services are, what the community feels about the hospital, what they feel about the Cancer Center or surgical needs or ICU needs. And they will gather and bundle all that information up and present it in November. They also sent out about 200 surveys through Survey Monkey and the Chamber of Commerce was able to supply those email addresses. So they went out to business entities, they went out to individuals in our community and they've gathered many of those responses that will be bundled up into this final report. What they'll be able to tell us through that report is the, where the, if the money is here and where the balance of that money can be found within the, the region, the geography and the state of Oklahoma. We're anticipating this facility opening its doors between the next three to five years and we will have a full, full-on run to go out and gather this money for the Cancer Center. Mr. Keith has promised that he's going to devote a lot of his time in the near future to cultivating relationships where they need to be cultivated so that we can make this happen and become a reality here at McAllister Regional. This is a need that is needed here in Southeast Oklahoma. We can become the premier location on our campus for cancer care. The choices today are coming to our campus right now, which is very crowded, or going to Tulsa, going Oklahoma City, or going out of state. So we have tremendous opportunity to serve the patients, to serve our community, to give them the space that they need so that we can make sure that we're taking care of them quickly and helping them as fast as we can.
Thanks, Jeff. So let me share with you this. So make no mistake about this, we will build a new Cancer Center. The question is, is we have other master facility plan needs and a lot of this philanthropic effort isn't just to help us with the Cancer Center. It's to build the tower that meets our other needs. Again, as a reminder, we are a 1978 vintage hospital. Our operatories are not capable of incorporating robotics and we have plans to bring robotics to our hospital within the next three to five years. Our ICU is 150% undersized and underbetted. And so to replace an ICU and to replace surgical suites means new space. We cannot close down operations and renovate in place. So the Cancer Center is the foundation of a bigger project, which is the Tower Project, which will, and the goal is, is to build that Cancer Center with two stories shelled on top for future growth. One, to accommodate our surgeries, our new surgery suite robotics program and number two, to build out a new ICU. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my remarks and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, in your recruiting process of doctors, I think I ask you this every time, do you guys take care of the school loans or how do you handle that to get them here? Is that part of the contract?
It can be. In many cases, it is. We are partnered with Physician Training and Manpower Commission of the state. Dr. Kathy and I have worked with them. Dr. Richard Evans in the state has a program to help rural communities pay off student loans. Typically, it's a, I think the maximum is a four-year, $160,000 program to help reduce student loans. Did I miss anything on that, Tim? That's good. And oftentimes, we might participate in that depending on the specialty. So the answer is absolutely.
Okay. Is that it? And the contract, is that like a four-year deal? How long do they have to stay here if they decide they come?
It's a, it's, every year, we pay a portion of that 160 every year. Typically, our contracts are three to four years in length.
Okay. And same as nursing, recruit nurses, like East Central University's got a great nursing program.
We know.
Oh, you know, I'm giving them a.
We, how many, how many nurse externs do we employ for that program? How many? No, but the vast majority of them.
Come from East Central?
You bet. We have a strong relationship with that, them and Kamechew for our nursing nurses.
Well, I'm just giving a plug for Sean, he's one of my students.
Well, and we have scholarships for them as well and retention bonuses for nurses. Again, one of the reasons we've become one of the best places to work is we are treating our employees very well right now.
Good. So you guys are really moving.
Thank you.
Councilman Harris.
I've got a quick question pertaining to residency. Is there a place where they're lodged and where they, where they stay while they're resident?
Well, many of them, again, they are paid, they get a salary from us. Many of them buy homes here or lease homes. That, that's just part of the program, but they get benefits that a lot of other doctors and other staff don't. We feed them, we provide them stipends for their books and for their education and training for their CMA. So they're not doing it for free. They aren't making the salaries as a full-fledged physician would out in practice, but we compensate them well to help, help with that. Thank you.
I just have one question. It's actually for Mrs. Keith. How did it do?
I will translate that one later. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We will move to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon an ordinance adopting the Moving McAllister Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of McAllister dated September 2019 and amending section 62-7 Comprehensive Plan, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for separability. Ms. Cliff?
Kind of lost my audience now.
Don't take it personally.
Good evening. So I'm, I'm happy to present to you this final comprehensive plan and just a staff's recommendation to adopt this. The Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance to formally adopt it on September 17th and unanimously voted to recommend this. And so I hope that you all consider this and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Councilwoman Harrison?
When you talk about adopting, are you saying all, all the changes that need to be made have been made and this is just a replacement from 1996? Or are you saying this is something that we need to accept?
And this is an update to the comprehensive plan. There was one initially done in 1978. It was updated in 96. And so this is the new plan that was presented to y'all on, on August 13th. And this plan will update that current, you know, the previous plan. So this is just the formal adoption of it. There are some other changes that we'll do just based on the recommendations that are in the plan. We are currently developing our action plan. So this is a plan that we do not intend to just set on the shelf and not do anything. There was a considerable amount of public input that was taken. And so we fully intend to implement many of the things that are in this plan.
So let me get a clear understanding of this. So this plan that we're looking at, this is going to replace the, the previous plan from when you said 1976. But there still are some changes that need to be made. Is this what we're saying or is this what you're saying?
This is looking at basically what the public wants and the direction for the city to move towards. There is, the, the phase six of it is to review our codes, our land development codes and kind of look at, based on what the public is telling us, what changes that may need to happen. So that's another phase of it. But we're taking the recommendations of this plan to move forward with any of the initiatives that we do here at the city, based on what the public is telling us that they would like to see.
All right. Now, is this strictly what the public says now or is it input from anyone else too?
There is a lot of input from staff as well, just based on, you know, what we see and, you know, what we're able to do, you know, and to work under, but we, it does consider, you know, what the public would like.
Okay. Now, wasn't there another plan? Is that kind of defunct or is this strictly the one?
No. There are several different plans. Like we have a master trails plan that kind of looks at, you know, mobility and, you know, activity and stuff like that in the city. And there's also a master drainage plan, which looks at stormwater and, you know, there's several different plans, but this is the comprehensive plan that kind of takes all those plans, looks at them and kind of puts it all together and kind of pushes us and guides us in a direction that we should be moving towards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman, accept the motion. Got a motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Pritchard. Any further discussion? Corvage Colorelle, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you. We are on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon accepting a bid amount of $28,000 from Sunrise Construction LLC with the canal wall mitigation program, phase one, Sandy Creek Tributary D, C Street to Fourth Street, and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for canal wall mitigation program, phase one, Sandy Creek Tributary D, C Street to Fourth Street.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Keep it short and sweet. This was a mitigation plan that was put together for the concrete canals that are in Tributary D. The, we identified the five worst locations. There were 55 or 54 deficiencies noted on the full comprehensive study and we narrowed it down to which were the highest priority. Some of these places, within the last year, the wall is tilted a couple of inches in the past year. So these measures are to mitigate, try and keep those walls in place and keep them from falling. So with that being said, we went through the full-blown bid process. The parent low bidder, after we reviewed all of the bids, was Sunrise Construction an amount of $28,000 and that is our recommendation.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion.
Okay. Motion, Councilman Pritchard, second. Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Corvage Colorelle, please.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries. We're on to new business, any matter not known, which, known or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section 311.9, Title 25, Oklahoma State statutes. Do we have any new business?
We do.
In that case, we will move to the city manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council, a couple of items I want to talk to you about. I also handed out my city manager's report. I want to go through a few items with you on that. But one thing I wanted to give you notice of, I have approved an emergency change order for the streetscape program downtown. That change order is in the amount of $17,140. This has to do with the stormwater. Stormwater major problem that we uncovered at Second and Choctaw. We found, once we took the top off of that, we discovered that a lot of the, that stormwater drainage system was not connected and it was extremely deficient. A lot of that drainage down underneath there was actually made of bricks and mortar and is, how old, we don't know. But we've definitely figured out what the odor is that's been under that intersection ever since I've been here. And in order to fix that, we needed to get right after it because it was going to stop the contractor from being able to move forward. With that $17,140, we are still under the total contract price that was approved by the council for the project. If you remember at the last council meeting, we had a deduct and so we're still under for that project. My city manager's report, if you look at our sales tax percentage for the first three months of this year, July, we're about a little over 9% over last year. This is all over the prior year, so we're continuing to see strong returns. August was a little over 6% and in September, we are very strong, is about 11% over the prior year. In our use tax, over the prior year, in July, we came in almost 20% under budget. We don't know why that occurred, but we came back strong in August and September, being 40% over budget from the prior year, over from the prior year in August and about 25% over the prior year in, in September. So we're coming back very, very strong on our use tax. Couple of major projects that are going on, I think you, you guys recently approved the 20-inch water line out of the water plant that bypasses the old plant down underneath. It's about 700 feet of addition of new, of new piping, along with the 30-inch pipe that's at the Lake McAllister on the dam. Both of those projects have now gone through the pre-con and we are anticipating both contractors to be onsite somewhere around Oc- October 7th, October 8th. So those projects are coming, coming up very quickly. They both have a 120-day build for each one of those projects. Last, here a little while ago, we got a check for $5,000 from ARP. That matches $13,000 of city monies that'll go into RVest Park in the form of benches, tables, shade, just amenities to be able to start utilizing that park this fall. So that'll all be coming forth sometime in November, early November. You can read the rest of this. I'm not going to go through it. If you have any questions, please let me know and I will get on it immediately. Mayor, I'm going to show you some maps real quick, if you don't mind. I know this has been a long meeting. This won't take very long, but I'm going to do it anyway. Thank you. What I wanted to go over for a few minutes is what we have done in regards to asphalt overlays and asphalt reconstructions in the city. This is over the last two fiscal years, keep it, actually, it was all of 1819 and now we're into three months of 19 and 20. Everything in, in blue was overlaid in the year 2018, 2019. Everything in red has been done this year. And what I wanted to do was give you a glimpse of what's been accomplished in each ward. You're also going to see in, in some upcoming, if you look at the top of this map, there's a green area up there that is a proposed area that's going to be overlaid here in the very near future. This doesn't look like much when you, when you put it on a map, but I want to put it in perspective very quickly for you. There are 176 lane miles of roads in the city of McAllister. So if you drive from McAllister to Dallas and come back 14 more miles, that's how many miles we have inside this city, lane miles. So it's a tremendous undertaking of what we've have going on in this community. So this gives, kind of gives you an idea of what we've done in Ward 1. In Ward 2, we've pretty much focused on everything off of Ninth Street. We had some really bad roads back up in there. The area down off of Cardinal Lane in Ward 2 was done last year. The area down off of Cardinal Lane in Ward 2 was done last year, and we're going to be doing a section on Swallow that comes off of 69 bypass up towards Lock Supply. That's in desperate need and is becoming a maintenance nightmare for us. So that's what's going on in 2. In Ward 3, everything in blue was done last year. The red is what we have accomplished this year, and we're continuing to move forward in Ward 3. Ward 4, everything in blue was done last year. We do not have anything other than south of the, of the railroad. We've got a small section of, of area that has been done this year. So quite a bit last year, a little bit this year. Ward 5, we had a few things that were done last year. Nothing's been accomplished in Ward 5 this year, but we have three areas that are proposed that'll be done in the next 30 days or so. So we'll be focusing a little more attention on Ward 5. Then in Ward 6, quite a bit last year, and got a lot accomplished this year in Ward 6. Here's the surprising part about all of this. Doesn't look like much on a map, $781,735.35 to date. That's what we've spent on asphalt in the city of McAllister. So in a little more than a 15-month period, it does not go very far anymore. If you look at that number, you realize that we only get about $2 million a year in infrastructure money, and that has to be shared amongst water, sewer, streets, concrete, basically every infrastructure we have here at the city. So we're doing a lot with this money. We're getting a lot accomplished. I think the community's starting to realize and starting to recognize and starting to see what's being accomplished out there, and a lot's been done. We are coming close to the end of the season. You're probably looking at sometime in October, early November, that the asphalt plants will close down. They'll close down for the winter, and they won't reopen until we have multiple days that stay above 50 degrees at night. So it's probably looking at sometime in March or April before the plants will open back up again, and then we'll be back out on the streets. So I wanted to give you a little indication of what we've done, what we've accomplished, and what we, where we're heading in the next, in the next five years. Mayor, that's all I have.
In that case, we will.
I just wanted to ask, Pete, are we kind of following that, that study we had a few years ago to analyze the priority of street repairs needed and such? Councilman, we are, but we're also pairing that up with traffic counts and the amount of traffic that are on these roads. So we might have a road that only serves two or three or five homes that's in poor condition, but we're going to go focus on a road that's in poor, same poor condition that's got hundreds of cars traveling on it. So that survey didn't take into account the? Volume. Traffic on the, on the road? It did not. Purely the condition? It was a condition index-only report. So what we're doing is, we're also looking at, we know where the, where the bad roads are, and the reason we know that is because we are continually going back and filling potholes and regrading, and, and they have become maintenance nightmares. And it's based, a lot of it's based on the amount of traffic that's on that road. Got you. Thanks.
I got, there. I know I had to turn in a couple streets that I wouldn't ride a buggy on, so that, how will we end up getting those on a list so they can be repaired? Now, it's not a lot of traffic on that street, and I have to go back and look at my notes that I've given, but that one definitely needs to be repaired or block it, a block it.
I can give you 200.
Oh, I'm sure you can, but I, I got a check over there. But I'm just saying, I'm probably, we need to get together, and I want to go out and show you a couple.
And that's fine. I look forward to it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Remarks and inquiries by council? Council, Councilman Reed?
Pete, earlier in the year, I asked you to get with ALK Railroad about the A Street, D Street crossings. And I know you did, and ALK got on the A Street crossing really quick, did a good job working on that. But we had some bad weather, and I don't think they ever got to D Street.
They did not.
Could, could you contact them and remind them of that?
Councilman, we actually contacted them about 10 days ago, and they told us that they were going to get it on their schedule pretty soon.
Okay.
Okay? So, yeah, we were following up on it, and we've been following up with them. They just had their own problems.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, sir. Manager, you want to give me an update on that mall?
I do. I can find my email. Can you give it back to me?
Yeah. Yeah. I got a candidate right back. I don't have anything over. He was telling me to say it.
Yeah, I'll summarize it for you. About 5:30 this, this evening, I got an email from Bert Collins, who is the developer for the 14th Street Mall, basically saying that all, most of the agreements are in place. They're still got a couple of things that they need to clean up, but he is anticipating closure on the mall and, and all of the funding mechanism being taken care of in the next 24 to 48 hours. So, and that came from Mr. Collins this afternoon.
Councilwoman Harrison?
I attended the Lieutenant Governor Matt Pennell's tourism reception, but I was a little bit surprised that Old Town was not on the tourist list. I, I don't know why that was missed. Is there any reason?
On what tourist?
All right. On the tourism, I know he went to some parts of McAllister, and he went to Krebs, but I talked to the business people, and they don't remember seeing him in Old Town, and I just wondered how that happened.
That's interesting because Eddie Gray was the one that put this on, and he was the one that took care of most of scheduling and everything, so I was unaware that he did not go to.
Well, I talked to several business people, and they said that they didn't see him. I thought that was, especially since it's a historic district.
Sure.
So I was kind of wondering about that. And I want to thank you and the city employees for working on the North Town Cemetery, getting, getting that worked on and making improvements there. And the residents are enjoying the Conley Park, which we call Skate Park too, so thank you so much for that.
Councilman Pritchard?
City manager, in your notes here about RVest Park, Pete says he was going to install this pole. Is that, is that the northwest corner there?
It's right there on the corner of 2nd Street and Chisinau, the area that hasn't been finished by the city.
Good.
Because until that pole is set, we don't want to go in there and set any sidewalks or anything else.
You, when do you think this is going to happen?
It was going to happen four weeks ago. So we have not, we have not heard a new date from them. We, we are under the understanding that this new steel pole is in.
Okay.
And the importance of that pole, Councilman, is it is a steel pole that's going to be mounted on concrete, which means there's no guy wires off of it.
They built one up already, didn't they?
They did.
East of there?
They did, and I don't know why that's there.
Oh, you don't?
I don't. I don't.
Okay. One more question. The Highway 69, the interchange out there, wherever it's going to be, at Kincaid or Village, do you know when that's going to start?
The overpass?
Yeah.
Bidding is in the spring and possible construction in the summer.
You know how long they, or ODOT's projecting that's going to take?
One and a half years.
Okay.
Is the construct time.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the overpass. Is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Mayor's comments and committee appointments. I just have one quick thing. Two Mayor Brown, John Brown, and city councillors, from Joe Brawley, Board President of PC Care Incorporated. Dear sirs, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Pittsburgh County Child Abuse Response Effort, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for your $4,500 contribution. This money came at a critical time for us, and I can assure you that it is for a good cause and will be wisely spent. We hope that you will remember us in the future, as we feel that we provide essential services to child victims and their families in this community. And thank you, Joe Brawley. With that, I, we will recess the council meeting. I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from September 30th, 2019, regular meeting of McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item C and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corriged, Colerole, please.
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries. Now, take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from September 10th, 2019, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item C, D, E, 3, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corriged, Colerole, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries. Now, take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from August 27, 2019, regular meeting of McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefit payments for the period of September 2019 and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Don't, okay.
No, no, just my motion. You already gave me.
Corriged, Colerole, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, I take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Brown, second, Councilman Pritchard. Any, any discussion? Corriged, Colerole, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.